Thursday, July 11th, meeting of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee to order. Welcome, everybody.
Yes.
We don't have too many people here tonight.
Yes.
I'm sure everybody has seen the agenda. So we have John Tuffy here tonight. I'd like to consider a motion if someone would like to make it to take Mr. Tuffy out of order so that we can have him speak to us now.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Excellent. So if I may, if you remember last year, you agreed to hire a new treasurer to support us. It was something that our auditors had asked us to do for many years. And last year, we actually put it in the budget. And it's for a small stipend for six to 10 hours a month. And it's basically to transfer our funds and also to reconcile our balances. So we hired somebody last year, and unfortunately, the person didn't work out as well as we hoped and required a lot more supervision than we had anticipated. So we decided, after speaking with Christine, that we would not renew his one-year contract. He just had a one-year appointment letter. So we reposted the position, and someone who we all know and love applied for the position. I think it's a perfect situation where it is one of the few times I can say it's an absolute win-win. He knows our system inside and out. He's absolutely trustworthy, and I'm thrilled that he decided to apply. So his letter of interest is here, and his resume is included. Mr. Tuffy, do you have any words of wisdom for us?
Thank you. It's going pretty well right now. I mean, there's no point in saying much of anything. And I think I know most of the people here, but just very quickly, as I was saying to Paul, I was here 18 years ago when you hired me as a business manager. In fact, I wasn't here, to be honest. It was at the old middle school, which was in Pembroke, but that's okay. For six years, I was your business manager, and for the next eight years, I was your superintendent of schools. I retired in 2015, and in 2016, I took an interim job in capacity as their business manager for the last two years and finished that up in '18. So I come here with eight years of being a superintendent of public education, six years, eight years of being a superintendent in total, and a background before that in government banking and public finance. So I think I have the interests, certainly, the qualifications and the experience. And welcome, John.
Thank you. I'm very excited. I've worked with you for many years. I think I joined the elementary school committee in like 2006, 2007, when you were a business manager, and then doing your term as superintendent as well. Does anybody on the committee have any questions? You don't need to take a vote, do you?
It actually is an appointment of the school committee. So if you don't mind, I would appreciate that.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to appoint Mr. Tuffy as the district treasurer, first of all.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome and thank you. You can never get away. Joy will be back next second.
Thank you, I'll come back next time.
Thanks, John. Don't feel obligated to stay, although I know how much you love meetings.
But this is going to be a record-short meeting.
Yeah, there we go. I'm getting quiet.
It could get fun though.
All right, so moving on, any public participation?
No, nothing? You're just here for the fun?
Yeah.
Approval of the minutes. Everyone has had a chance to take a look at the 13th regular session minutes. If anybody would like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, extensions? All right, it's unanimous. All right, school district business. Christine Hailey, Director of Business Services.
Thank you very much. I just want to mention, I remember too, there were no single signature warrants. The last group of warrants we had, we had a school community meeting, so those are all set. All right, and tonight is our closeout. You have again successfully made it through another year. In your package, you will find your blue copy of the financial. I have a white copy. The warrants are circulating tonight, it's a little different than normal. There are two years' worth of warrants. We have the closeout warrants from 2019. It's both payroll warrants and regular vendor warrants. And then for 2020, we also have two warrants. The warrants for 2020, we do because we have to pay our insurance, our health insurance, and we also have our other insurances that we pay. And if we pay right now at the beginning of the year, we get a significant discount. So we make that monthly payment on that and on our support contract retirement. And there might be a couple of other things that are really essential that need to be paid tonight. As we get to the operating budget, we have a balance, after all of our encumbrances, of $128,679.21, which will eventually flow back to our excess and deficiency account. On the list, you'll see all the encumbrances that are noted, items that are still outstanding, activities that have happened, and goods that have been received that we just have not yet received the invoices for. In a couple of places, you'll notice they're same KEO number with the vendor listed twice, and that's because there's work at middle school and high school. So it's the two quarters that are being reflected. I just wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention. Throughout the year, we just hit the financial, there are a couple of areas where we had some bumps in the road. One would be substitutes. Our substitute lines combined have a deficit of $35,000. And there could be a variety of reasons why we've had leaves throughout the year. You usually see a surplus in the teaching line from that, because not all leave necessarily they're getting paid for. So there is a surplus there. Homeless transportation has once again been a tough item for us. I budgeted...
Okay, Mr. Sheriff, let's ask a question on that last one.
Yeah.
Okay. So you said the surplus is generally outweighed by the...
Yes, in this case, it is. The surplus in the teaching line outweighs the deficit.
By all?
Oh, it said that and that, so it covers the whole thing. It covers it all. Homeless transportation, what I try to do is look at the past five years and average. I budgeted $25,000 that I split between the two schools. As of right now, we have a deficit of $82,000. We've had a really tough year at Silver Lake this year. Keep in mind, we do get reimbursement the following year, some homeless reimbursement. It's not full, but we do get some. So that's actually one of the elements that we have this year that I do not budget for that, out of that revenue as it comes in, because I can't count on the amount or when or how it's going to come in. I just wanted to mention that. Maintenance, yes?
I'm sorry, can I ask a question around that one?
Sure.
So that's a substantial difference, that overdraft. What's in our budget for next year?
I don't recall off the top of my head, but I don't think, it's not increased that significantly. So what's going to happen is, when I do, when I average the five years, it risks that over there.
Right.
But the situation can be exactly the same, or it could be totally different. I just...
It's so variable, right?
Yes. It is.
Okay. I'm just curious, what's this?
I do believe I increased it because this year was already trending much higher. I don't recall the exact dollar amount, though, of that transfer, of that change.
Thank you.
No worries. And then contract services, maintenance of buildings, maintenance of grounds, has also had a tough year. You do know that our hot water tanks had to be replaced. We did take care of that and the installation of that. One of the things that we have done is, we've tried to work on, the middle school has had a real problem with humidity when it gets hot, late June classes and then into August and September. So we were able to have some work done through our refrigeration, where we're looking at taking the humidity out. So it's not truly a negative, we're taking the humidity out, and it's made a real difference. Actually, I called today from the principal saying that it's amazing what it's done. And actually, some of the custodians have noticed it when they're working at night, that it's not nearly as humid and overwhelming as it has been. So we'll try, we'll put some energy into that. We were able to take care of three of those units at the middle school this year within their budget, because they happened to be having a pretty good year at the time. Things ended a little differently, but those are some of the items that we were able to take care of.
I'm still learning, so I'll ask a couple of questions. So the water heaters that we've replaced here and the upgrades to the system over there, would those be considered capital or just repairs?
What was done to the middle school is, we capitalized at $25,000 and above, so the hot water tanks. But for us, it's different than for private entity. We're not depreciating that or anything. It's just, it's listed, it's in a listing of capital assets that when we have our official financial statements done, the auditors will work out the depreciation so that is noted so that we can be compared to other, like, other linked entities. But our threshold is $25,000 and a 10-year life for us to capitalize items. One of the areas where we do have a significant surplus is our insurance line, and specifically health insurance, the health and life insurance line. One of the things that I know, one of its line-boggling changes, one of the things that I do, for instance, when I did the 2020 budget, I have a census of current employees that are involved in health insurance. So I assume those employees are going to continue where they are. I add the increase per mainline municipal health group, they expect that increase to be. And then I add a factor in case a handful of employees, five to seven employees, switch from an individual plan to a family plan, because that can make it, that's a significant difference. What is different this year is, a couple of years ago, with our new special ed director, she decided to change the way the 240 grant is being used, the employees that were covered under that. We're no longer employing teachers under that, so that we're not paying a mass teachers' retirement piece. So what's happening is, when we took off the 10 teachers, we now have 20 paraprofessionals, and so we have more insurances that are included in there. But the grant pays for their insurance benefits. So the grant is reimbursing the operating budget for their costs of the health insurance of those employees. So that has been a real spike in the reimbursements coming in. Those that are covered by revolving and grant accounts, the revolving grant accounts pay for their health insurance. So that's coming back into the operating budget. So that's why we have a significant surplus this year. All right, so that's the operating side of the budget. Are there any questions on that?
Okay.
Now I'm going to go to the revenue side of the budget. We're tasked with not only coming up with our budget of how we're going to use our funds, but how we're going to raise our funds. So that provides some additional opportunities for funding. This year, based on all of our revenues, we're expecting that our revenues will exceed the budget by $301,000. That's made of a combination of things. So that's our chapter 7 money, our regional transportation money, shared cost, yet meeting agreement credits, that's also included in that line. For this year, our regional transportation exceeded expectation by $123,000. We received our final payment on July 2nd, so we don't have, I don't receive the money in December to know that that's going to happen, and I can, we can adjust accordingly. July 2nd is when the final payment came in. Another item that exceeded expectation was the net meeting agreement. We received $114,000 in excess of what I had budgeted. The challenge with that is, if that plant goes down at any time, we don't have any place to recover that from it if the plant is shut down for whatever reason, we can't recover from that. So I always have to be really cautious when I make that estimate of the revenues. And one of the things that I do do every year is, I talk to the plant and the operators, the company that operates the plant, it's called Syncapa, asking them, is there any planned outages? So that's the best I can do, is find out if there's a planned outage, because occasionally there is a planned outage for maintenance, for those type of things to be done. So absent of that happening, I assume it's going to continue at a similar pace. But again, I still try to be cautious, just because I don't have anywhere to turn if that doesn't turn out as we had expected. So in addition to the budgeted revenues, we also have items that usually aren't huge that are unbudgeted. So I don't account for those at all when I'm preparing the budget. One of those items is homeless transportation, because it does change year to year. The dollar amount of what we had to get reimbursed for, and the state's reimbursement changes based on what they have allotted versus what's been submitted to them. So that number can vary greatly. Another item that I don't budget is interest. I don't budget interest, but interest has really started to creep up, the interest that we're gaining on our balances. So total, we received $113,000 in those other items that are then added to the increases that we have, and then added to what we're not spending in our budget. So if we look at all of that totally, we'll be returning approximately $543,000 to our E and D account. That's if nothing changes as of right now. That's what I know as of right now. That's what we'll be returning to our E and D account. Now, the only thing that can impact, one of the only things that can impact that going forward is, I've mentioned previously that we have an employee withholding account for all of our deductions, specifically health insurance and life insurance. That has been accumulating a balance throughout the years, and we have never had the system in place and the staff in place to fully analyze that, how that's accumulated. So what happens every month is our deductions are withheld, they're put into a withholding account. As we make our payments on our monthly invoice, it comes out of that withholding account. There are always some tweaks that happen because it's active employees versus retirees. We have some people that pay based on COB, so they're paying 100%. So somehow, over all the years, there have been some slight subtleties that have happened with those percentages that have resulted in our balance accumulating. What we're trying to not do now is really iron down, we know as of this June 30th, what we have in that account and what's been withheld from employees. So for instance, for me, when my benefits are withheld in June, it's pay my July premium. But a farmer teacher that's a 21 pay period or a 26, or a staff member that doesn't work over the summer, they're paying throughout the year for the July, August, and into September. So we've really had a tough time getting down, getting that firm number there. So what we do is, we're actually sitting down and doing it person by person by person to figure out what that, how much should we realistically have in that account versus what it appears that is in that account. So what we're going to start to do is have a plan in place to bring that back to actual. And what we're going to do is a year at a time. That's the best we can do right now, is a year at a time, is trying to calculate. All right, for June 30, 2019, how much did that change from last year? How much is this balance off where we believe, where we should be? So we're going to try to implement a plan to slowly bring that to actual. And then we can make it to the point where we may not be able to decipher, when we go back so many years, we don't have the ability to break all that information down. So I just wanted to let you know that's out there right now, and we're addressing that. We're doing the best that we can at the moment to address that.
So I mean, it just seems to me that, I mean, that's great, by the way. I just think that there seems to, isn't there a system, the best management practice, or a system that another school system has delved into that we can just copy or piggyback?
Because a lot of places, at the end of the year, they just say, this is what it is, let's write the difference off.
Right, really?
Well, it depends on which way your balance is going. Are you going to add it to your bottom line? Which one are you going to do? So we're trying to be as detailed as we can.
No, I'm not suggesting you're not. I'm just thinking, why reinvent the wheel if someone's doing it right already?
Because for us, this has never been adjusted, so it's a significant amount. So that's why we want to be as diligent as we can and identify as much as we can.
Your variable that you talked about earlier, though, the difference between family and individual plan is going to weigh into your calculation on that as well.
All of that work. It's just, it's a little overwhelming, and so that's why we have to end up doing it person by person, because that's the only way you can get to that true number. Are there any questions? I just wanted to make you aware of that. No. Was it a closeout?
Yeah.
I think I'm done.
Do we need any votes?
Yes.
On the second page, there's some wording, just that you vote to return this to the Silver Lake Regional School District revenue account, because it's a surplus, that's what it will go before it hits E and D.
There is one?
It's on the closeout.
Oh, here.
It's on the back.
Ah, here we go. Could someone like to make that motion?
I'll make it. So I assume that this is on the final closeout, so I'm recommending that we return $128,679.21, return to the Silver Lake School District revenue account.
Second?
Yes.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, extensions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So under Christine, it said single signature signers. So we actually, it wasn't about the warrants. We actually need, if people don't mind, to volunteer to come in to sign for us for the warrants when we're off-cycle for the meeting. I think we have three people, correct?
We have actually, we have a fourth alternate.
Should we switch off the...
I already, I do it now for Kingston, and I just re-upped for this coming year, so I'm more than happy to come in. I'm going to be coming in at the same time anyways.
And I'm right around the corner, so it's really easy.
So if we did E, C, L, T, and you don't mind either, again?
Okay.
So that's...
Three.
And anybody else interested?
As an alternate?
Well, someone from another town, probably, I mean, there's you and Lauren and...
I guess it doesn't have to be.
It doesn't, but...
It doesn't, but just kind of like...
I could be an alternate.
Okay, that would probably be a good idea, just to have all three towns represented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we get another town?
Yep, that was Gordon.
Okay, all right. All right, so we need to take a vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
What are we doing? Sorry.
Can we nominate those four?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make the motion, nominate Eric, Lauren, myself, Gordon for singles warrants.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Against, Eric, that's your name, it's...
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Superintendent Joey Blackwell.
Thank you. So included in your packet is an updated organization chart. One of the things I wanted to point out is, it's wonderful how many people are involved in all the different committees, but what is happening is, we have quorums on many of the subcommittees. And I just want us, while we're in subcommittees, to be conscious of the fact of not taking votes, because it would obligate the full committee when you have a quorum on the subcommittees. The one area that I did want to mention is, under negotiations, employee relations, Leslie Anne had mentioned she was interested in being on that. Because of what that committee is, I wondered, Leslie Anne, if you would be comfortable being an alternate on that committee, because we will have a quorum if you're a full member.
Wow, okay.
Is that okay?
Yep.
That one, because it's contractual, and when we make most, when we agree on things there, I think it's probably the one area I'm kind of concerned about, if that full negotiating subcommittee said, yes, we support it, I think we would then obligate the full committee to vote whatever was negotiated. So if that would be okay, we would make that change. But other than that, we have great committees. Thank you all so much for all the extra time and being willing to volunteer for all of them.
On the negotiations one, how many contracts do we have open in the next 12 months? Is it just the one where it's currently started?
Um... Whole bunches of them. Unfortunately, what happens is, when the teacher's contract is up, that means the support contract is up, because they all are on the same cycle.
Okay.
So it would definitely be that, and...
Teachers are represented?
Silver Lake, yeah, we already started.
You started that already?
Yeah.
You already had a meeting.
It just, it does feel like we just did it, yeah.
I wasn't sure, in terms of Leslie Anne wanting to be on the committee, I think it's fair to provide herself to stay on if you started one. I wasn't sure if there's six others. I would be happy to sort of take...
Oh, okay, that's a good idea. Yeah, sure.
Get a different contractor, materially different, but of the same...
Right, yep.
So that's something to put in mind. I would do that as well, if somebody else has to, so that more people get experience doing the negotiation.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great. So thank you. So this is updated, the only change would be Leslie being an alternate on negotiations. And then the only other thing I had was the treasurer's appointment, which we already did.
So, sorry, could we just change that?
If you were comfortable being an alternate on negotiations, that would be great. And then what can happen is, when we do the support staff, if Gordon wants to step off, you could step on.
Yeah, let me just clarify, even though she would be an alternate, she could still come to the meeting, but then, when she is there, we just need to be careful not to take a vote, correct?
Right, right. I mean, to be honest with you, I think it's somewhat of a concern, you know, we'd have a conversation with Fred, but you know, when you're negotiating, if everybody there is in agreement, then you can be pursued.
Yeah, and the other thing, though, I will say is that, I've been doing negotiations for a long time, both here and Kingston, and it's rare that everybody shows up for every meeting anyways.
Absolutely, yeah.
So as long as those who are on that committee, subcommittee, if you're not going to make it, you know, yeah, let Jason know or Joy, and then we'll be able to get an alternate in there. Because I think you guys made a good point. It's very good, I think, me being on negotiations for so long, I was actually, it was Joe Chaves and I on the Kingston Elementary School Committee on the negotiations, and I had run for this committee, and I left Kingston, and then after Joe passed away, we were in the middle of negotiating, and none of the current members there had ever done negotiations, and didn't know anything that was going on. And so I went back and was appointed back on the board to finish that out. So I think it's super important, it's one of the most important things we do, and there's so much involved in it.
Right, initially, contracts are something to say, so you can share team a little bit.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
I guess that would just kind of, it's probably just standard through any committee that we have alternates for. It just seems to me like, if you're going to need alternate, well, I can't say that one, sorry, I'm sitting in traffic. Alternate, that, when you inform Joy, then you inform the alternate, not you personally to say.
Yeah, we would, yep.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Sounds good.
I'm kind of wondering if the calendar survey...
Yeah, okay, well...
Committee. I'm not opposed to it, I just don't think it's...
We put you on a last one, it's just a new subcommittee, we had a couple of conversations about wanting to sort of ask...
You had brought it up.
Yeah, you were the one that brought it up.
You were the reason we had it.
Vacations, and starting with Good Friday, and Good Friday, you know, all of the things that sort of could change about the schedule. And we all sort of assume, well, we know what people want, but we may not. So I think the idea was to make, you know, just to develop a small survey to send out. But the first step would be for us to sort of develop what are the things we want to ask.
So when you leave a meeting, you get a scientist?
I was told that thing was only going to be an hour long, and I'm on a plane, so... I know. I guess the only comment, I mean, that's great, I think that's awesome. I know Gordon's happy about it, too. But the only question I guess I'd have, and maybe for me, it's just looking back at how we did the survey for the superintendents.
But we didn't do that, like...
No, I'm just, that's, oh, wait, let me just...
She's never gotten over that.
And I apologize, because I'm saying something when Jason's not here, but I don't mean to knock him at all, and I got why he did it, but I kind of feel like this, that survey maybe could have used a few more eyeballs before it went out, and probably could have used maybe a little bit more of maybe professional survey design, and you know, how do you feel similarly?
Yes.
So I'm sort of wondering if maybe this is like a survey committee, and anytime we want to survey on something, we do it more thought. I don't want to knock him, because I mean, it's great, I think it's what he got, it's good, you know what I mean?
Right, right. No, I think that would make sense. I think that next time we do the survey, you know, next time we talk about doing the survey, we can talk about how we want to make sure that that gets looked at, but I don't know.
It's been like 25 years since I took survey research classes at Duke. I really want to pull my book back out. Don't want to say.
Bingo.
Woo! I still have it, I don't know why. But no, I'm just thinking, it's great to do a calendar survey, but maybe this committee needs to be more...
Well, and I think this survey, I mean, this committee, and you know, I remember hearing about another organization that had lots of committees, and they said best practice for committees is to have task-based committees, you know, and this is a task-based committee. So we're going to, you know, think about, if you want to do a survey, we're going to put together some ideas, we'll throw them out to this group, we'll decide, do we really want to do the survey or not? And that should be done.
Yep. So...
This survey may be a little different in nature, and I agree completely with everything you've said so far. I have, I wish we could have approached the superintendent one differently. This one might be more nuts and bolts, you know, it's date-oriented, it's not, there's, it's more, I'm going to say quantitative, and that's not the right word. The other one was more subjective, I think. This one's going to be much more, do you want to have a break in March, April, or May kind of thing? So I think this one might be a little bit more manageable.
And we may put together our ideas and think, this is not even worth doing. Like, you know, it may not even be enough for a survey, because I think if we're going to survey our sort of constituents, it's going to be important and significant. So if you feel like we're going to get information that we're actually going to do something with, then, you know, I think we'll do it. But if not, then, you know, that can be something we can talk about with a larger committee. I think the idea was just the three of us, and I didn't even realize it was going to be a committee for it, but it said survey, so I said yes.
Yeah. Put you on it, because you were...
Yeah, we said we wanted to help, so...
Yeah, well, it's just interesting, because Lauren and I have sat on the school councils for years, and we labor over that middle school survey. And, you know, survey writing is a, it's an art, and it's a science, and you've got to ask questions the right way. So we're going to bias the results. So I just think that, in general, we should be doing it in a more professional fashion, if we do them.
I think we'll, you know, anytime we talk about them, we'll, you know, we'll make sure that we're doing that.
And Gordon agrees with me.
And I did get beat up as soon as I put on Facebook, we talked about that at the meetings, about changing the calendar.
It won't go well. I can guarantee you.
One other thing about the organizational chart, I feel like I'm a broken record, but didn't we change the name of school start times?
We did. We did, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I was right in one place last time, so, you know...
Was it sleep, study?
No, no, it was, school start times was what we changed it to.
We changed it to school start times.
Oh, yeah. It was sleep, study.
That was because I was looking, and they were all the same, and I was like, I remember the piece that I read.
Yeah, no, because we're not doing the sleep study.
Okay, so we got it right.
We got it right.
Can you give me a little bit of, or me and a couple of new members, newer members, context on this, like, why do we have this committee if we're not doing any work on it?
Well, I think we are, that's the point. So it's being brought up again, it's a lot more, it's being brought more to the forefront. So... more, it's being brought more to the forefront, so I think we do need to reactivate it, and that's why I agreed to be on it with Ed this year, 'cause I've had multiple people who didn't know each other contact me about it, and it happened in years, I mean, we did, I don't, four years ago that we did the survey before, and it split 50/50, pretty much, and I think there's more push, and it's more from...
The elementaries don't wanna do it, the secondary don't...
If we were ever gonna do a survey on that again, I mean, would it make sense to combine start time survey with the calendar survey? I mean, it's all sort of...
I don't think we need to do, well, this is just my opinion, I don't think we need to do a survey on it right now, I think we need to do more research into what the state is doing, because in the end, I mean, I think we talked about this before, if the state pushes this, then everybody will do it, obviously, but for some schools to do it and some don't, I mean, it affects a lot of things, after-school jobs, clubs, sports, everything.
Buses.
Parents' buses, I mean, yeah, it never ends, but if everybody did it, everybody does it. So, and then obviously, we need to work with teachers, contracts, there's a lot. So I don't think we need to do a survey yet, because a survey would imply some relatively quick action, and it's not gonna be a quick action, even if it was, even if the parents were unanimous, or like 90% supporting it, there's too much to do. So I wouldn't, personally, I wouldn't recommend doing a survey yet.
Or we're gonna keep the committee because we're gonna do work on it this year?
Yes.
Alright.
And if we don't, then we drop it next year. Alright, if there's nothing else, then we'll move on to new business. Is there any new business?
I do have, no, I just have something that I, I just had something quickly. In my presentation, behind the financial, there's one single sheet, and it lists all of the fund code balances that have, all the, I'm sorry, the function codes that had a deficit, and one of the things that was important to it was to create this, that we clear those out. So I have continued, and I have added a sheet where you would see where we're getting, using the funds to cover all the deficits. So if you look on that sheet, the total balance or return is $128,000, when I make all the adjustments, it turns it to zero. So if you could just give me a vote, that we could make those changes as needed, please? Oh, it's the white sheet behind the financial.
I'm motioning so that we can make the adjusting entries totaling $128,679.21 to offset positive versus negative general ledger accounts.
Thank you.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Alright, any other new, new business? Any old business that we need to discuss? Alright, reports of special committee, Silver Lake Education Association, they are not here. Admin review, no meeting on that. CTE, nothing?
Nothing other than the greenhouse is basically completed, it was just under the wire, and in September, when we have the meeting, we'd love to be able to take you on a tour.
They did well, that was really nice. Chairman's report, correspondence, do we have any correspondence? And Jason's not here, and I have no report. Legislative agents report, there's no report for that.
There's no budget either.
No budget, yeah, details.
Negotiations, employee relations, we have another meeting scheduled the end of...
August? Yeah, August sometime.
Yep. PAC?
Ed's not here.
Yeah, policy?
We don't have any updates yet.
Okay. Revolving funds?
I don't know, we can imagine.
Safer?
Safer, we met just before this meeting, and just to give you some highlights, the bids for the work we're gonna have done on the roofs are due July 18th. We're hoping that once we hire somebody, that there'll be substantial work completed by October 1st. We talked in the committee about how to house warranty information going forward. We discovered in the roof exercise that not all warranty information is housed in one easily accessible place, so we talked about scanning the warranties going forward and having them available to everybody who, I'm saying Google Docs, and I don't know if that's actually the right, yeah, so that administration can see them, the custodian can see them, business manager can access them, et cetera. So that's our practice going forward. We are going to begin working on the practice field, for the football practice field. Right now, nobody is using that field, we're going to be doing some grading and some seeding, and hopefully grow grass very quickly without any hard rain, and have some grass, you know, so we can begin using it again. Some other things were covered off on our capital plan, and I don't know if we wanna add anything else as highlights. Do you wanna talk about the kiosks, the, no?
Not quite yet.
Yeah, okay. That's probably about it. Oh, the water heater, I'm not the water heater, the water filtration plant, we are painting that currently, sandblasting and painting. It was recommended that that really needed to be done sooner rather than later to prevent any further erosion and more problems, so that is actually happening as we speak as well. And I think that's probably the highlights of our meeting. We met for about 45 minutes, we went through a whole bunch of things, and, you know, we're getting there, step by step.
Sure.
I just need a tiny bit of education, if you don't mind, so on the, I get the safety and facilities part, because all these things are crazy that are happening, and it's great, but the fees and the revenue, so what, are we talking fees from activities, are we talking fees from net, like, what are we, net metering, like...
Fees, and correct me if I'm wrong, where that came from, that's where we were looking at athletic fees, et cetera, and we kinda grouped a whole bunch of things together a few years ago, so that's, we were looking at athletic fees, et cetera, and increasing those or changing those, we looped that into this group.
And wasn't it also the solar, because the solar might've provided revenue, but it was also sort of a facilities thing, so it...
Right, so the revenue part goes to, when budgets are very, very tight, and economics are very tight, for a number of years, we were trying to find how to grow our own revenue. We're not in the business to do that, we're in the business to educate the kids. We can't come up with a lot of revenue opportunities. The net metering certainly was a wonderful one. You know, we looked at other things, like charging more for parking spaces, or painting parking spaces, you know, doing artwork on parking spaces, and selling that, so we've tried to look at a number of different things, you know, and the solar panels being one. We put that in this committee as well, because everything we thought about affected the campus, so it sort of fit in there. I honestly don't know if there's a lot more from a revenue perspective we can possibly do, but, you know, it's sort of open-ended. So we sort of collapsed subcommittees into this, it kind of made sense.
Yeah, I can definitely see that.
School start times, treasurer's report, our treasurer's not here.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
New one?
Yes, new one.
Great.
See what happens when you don't show up?
Quite the plan, right? So for 2019, we have 18 total accounts payable, totaling $757,652.78. Total payroll was $368,934.04, per grand total of $1,126,585.52. And the FY '20, we had two total accounts payable for $1,457,466.36. We had a payroll of $74,899,088, for grand total of $1,532,366.24.
Any questions? Alright, thank you. Unit 31, no meeting. Approval of the bill schedule, single signature warrants, we didn't have any since the last meeting. Future meetings, dates to remember, August 23rd, new teacher orientation, August 26th through 27th is in-service for teachers, August 28th is the first day of school, yay, September 2nd Labor Day, September 12th is the next school committee meeting at Silver Lake Middle School, and I would like to note it...
Motion with John?
An hour and 13 minutes.
Nope, 43 minutes.
Oh, that's right, we did start at 6:30, yeah, I was like...
You were good.
Very good. Did somebody second it?
Well, I said before, before you joined, I was just wondering, since Kingston, since we sit in Kingston, we are a green community, right? I was just wondering if it's possible if we could all try to bring maybe reusable containers for water, because there's water fountain right outside, instead of using bottled water at our meetings, if that's possible, just make our effort to show or lead by example for our children.
I think we, correct me if I'm wrong, but often we have to hear also for the folks who come in the audience, not just, not just us, but I think it makes sense for us at the table to do that, but, I mean, do we wanna take a vote on that?
No, not extending a vote, it's just something I would just like us to consider as just business operated, if we just try to be greener, that would be great.
I think it would still be good just to have it for the audience, just in case, or any guests that we have, but for the rest of us, I think it's a great idea.
Can I just ask one question, Lauren, John? What is the date of, I was just looking through my notes from my last meeting, I can't really find it, but what is the date of the posting for the superintendent's issue?
I believe it was August 1st.
Yeah, it rings a bell. Yeah, we moved it.
Right, I remember we moved it, and I was just looking through my stuff, but I didn't see it.
It is in the minutes, so, because I looked at that myself, I was trying to refresh my memory before I came in.
Alright, so I have a motion, do I have a second? To it, John.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Alright, so 44 minutes.
That's right. Thank you.